Mike, check.
Mike, Mike. Mike, Mike.
I check one, two. Good. That's the secretary, if you don't mind, we're gonna go ahead and try to get started. Senator was fine, secretary needed to. Good afternoon, everyone, if you don't mind, take your seats and we're gonna try to get started. Few announcements, if you have to take a phone call, please step outside of the room. Today is Monday, December first, two o'clock. We're here to review the highway construction program for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven in District O five, East Carroll, Jackson, Lincoln, Madison, Morehouse, Washtotl, Richland, Union, and West Carroll Parish. My name is Ryan Boryak, I represent District forty-seven and serve as Chair of the House Transportation Committee. Members, y'all wanna introduce yourself or you want me to run through? Okay, we're gonna start with Senator Kathy, Representative Turner, Representative Tarver, Senator Price, Representative Landry, Representative Phelps snuck in with her cane cup. Representative Moore.
I always gotta call for me because when I get here early.
Also, if we have any local government officials. Mister Randy Walters with the East Carroll Police Jury. Karen, help me with that last name, Ludley, with Lincoln Parish Police Jury, thank you. Johnny Hugh, that's with Madison or Morehouse, Madison, Parish Police Jury. David Wilson, Madison, Madison. James Ellenberg with Morehouse, recognize that face. Did I miss anybody, any local elected officials that we missed? Thank you all for being here. As mentioned earlier, we're here to review the Highway Priority Program for this fiscal year. And what we're going to do is go ahead and get started with Secretary Lade providing us with an intro and a brief update. Secretary Lade, please introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you Chairman Glenn Lade, Secretary DOTD. Really excited to be here on our first day to kick off our annual Highway Priority Program Roadshow for FY twenty-six, twenty-seven. Have a really good presentation for you here today. I know that, you know, as our first one today, we've got a number of things we wanna go through, including an overview of the HPP, obviously the selection process and then the investment that we have in this FY twenty-two-six plan. But before we do that, I do wanna really highlight some introductions. We've got a number of people that are here from DOTD and our leadership team that do a lot of work on this booklet that you see in front of you. And so just wanna say kudos to them. Obviously, this is a year-long process where we put this together and this roll this out to you through this roadshow. In addition to that, we have a number of folks from our district here that do a lot of work every single day for the state of Louisiana, in particular, you know, here now that we are in District O five. So, thank you for all your hard work and the efforts that you do for our state. With that, I know that, you know, some of the things that we really wanna talk to you about today before we jump in is the progress at DOTD and the transformation that we're really going through. And so, through the hard work of the legislature and the leadership here on joint transportation, we have the blueprint for that and the legislation that we passed in this last legislative session. And so, with that, I just wanna highlight a few things that we're doing. First and foremost, we are improving the communication and the transparency of the department to make sure that everyone in the legislature and in the public know the investments that are being made. And so, one of the things that you have in front of you is the new guidebook to the HPP. It obviously showcases the investment as well as what's going on in every district across the state. And so, hopefully, this marks a significant change to the ability for us to communicate that. We've got new and improved mechanisms on our website, including a project delivery viewer where you can showcase all of the projects across the state in every region and geography and look at the phase that they're in. And then we will be continuously making improvements to this that everyone in the public knows where every project in tax dollar that's going into this program is being invested. And so, we're really excited about those changes. Of that, we do have a new office of highway, a new office of project delivery where we are focused on really the reliability of our project delivery process and really the accountability and consistency of that. And so, we have a new Assistant Secretary of Project Delivery Eric Dofanay. And so, I'm asking him to come up and tell you a little bit about the changes that are ongoing there and the hard work that he's doing in order to transform the project delivery process. So, Eric.
And as Mister Dofanay is walking up, we would also like to acknowledge Stacy Mitchell, Mayor Westman.
Good afternoon. Like to, oh, I'm sorry, Eric Dofanay, Assistant Secretary of Project Delivery for DOTD. Got you, bud. I'd like to start by thanking everyone for attending. These public hearings are instrumental in instrumental parts of project prioritization and selection process. Also wanna remind everybody, while we have these official hearings, we also like feedback throughout the year. Please feel free to reach out and teach District Administrator or myself with any questions, concerns, input that will help prioritize our needs. Feedback from legislators, from local officials, from the public are key parts of the project selection process, along with other factors such as existing conditions, average daily traffic, safety concerns, maintenance costs, economic development, et cetera. We do utilize this feedback we receive throughout the year to deliver projects that are important to the people we serve. As Secretary mentioned in legislation last year, created the Office of Transformation and Office of Project Delivery. Both offices aimed at enhancing efficiency, effectiveness, and accountability within DOTD. Since then, we have launched new initiatives to modernize our internal processes. With respect to project delivery, we're evaluating and streamlining the entire process, including project prioritization, updated project delivery framework, task and responsibility-oriented project management, a new project reporting system for increased transparency, and even contract administration and construction phase consistency. Essentially, our goal is to clearly define our project priorities, establish a five-year living fiscally constrained highway priority program, along with ideas on how to fund and how to resource those projects. And to reform our project management and project delivery process to provide more accountability and consistency from project inception to construction. Another huge effort, as the secretary mentioned, is the communication of the Highway Priority Program, not only through the materials that you have in front of you and kind of reshape the way that we deliver those, but also just through the constant communication that we're having with local legislators and the public. And we appreciate that. Communicating, that's part of communication, communicating priorities, the risk associated with project development, challenges and opportunities will foster more trust and collaboration amongst all stakeholders needed to deliver the critical infrastructure expected of us. Aside from internal process enhancements, another key component in the formula, perhaps what may be the largest component, is funding. DOTD has historically allocated all federal and state dollars in each fiscal year. But in the past couple of years, the additional dollars through the Louisiana Transportation Infrastructure Fund, or LTIF, has helped to deliver an additional one hundred projects, totaling over five hundred and thirty million dollars statewide in roadway preservation projects alone. That was sixty-two additional projects in addition to our regular programming that we have each year. The sixty-two additional projects delivered in twenty-twenty-four and thirty-seven projects that are on or ahead of schedule this fiscal year. In addition to the capital side of LTIF, each district received seven and a half million dollars last year and seven million dollars this year in operational maintenance funding. This funding was spent on several typical maintenance operations, but in-house crews also used some of this funding to purchase materials to help maintain and preserve our existing system, which reducing assets that we have in more deteriorated conditions, which ultimately helps stretch the capital budget. The continuation of these efforts would truly help deliver and advance essential infrastructure improvements and address a growing backlog of needs. So, thank you to the legislators for the trust and commitment. And also, thank you to the districts, our design offices, construction offices, and maintenance offices, for taking on the challenge and delivering these additional projects. The combined efforts from all of us is making a difference statewide. With that, I would like to introduce District Administrator, Mister Jeff Canelo, say a few words.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
All right, Jeff Canelo, District Engineer Administrator for District O five. First thing I'd like to do is introduce my executive staff that's here today. I'd like for them to stand up and remain standing until we get finished. Mister Matt French, ADA of Engineering, Jim Denzmore, ADA of Operations, Todd Jones, he's an area engineer in Area C, Dean Wilkerson, area engineer in Area B, and Ms. Bridget Skinner, area engineer in Area A, and Ms. Natalie Sisfrum, she's our traffic engineer. If it wouldn't be for these people, we wouldn't be able to get anything done. These are people that make everything happen in District O five. Thank y'all. All right, I'm sure y'all are aware that we have quite a bit going on in Richland Parish through the Meta facility. And we work very closely with them, you know, dealing with all the permits that that's required, every one of them drives, excuse me, every one of those drives you see need a permit. It is a massive undertaking, the amount of traffic that we see now compared to just a year ago is unbelievable. You know, Meta is doing some maintenance work for us on some of these routes. I know they're gonna help out on some of the other routes that have been deteriorating due to the, due to the traffic, you know, from, for their facility. Mainly, you can see the deterioration we see mainly is from the, not just the traffic going in and out, but from embankment pits. Wherever there's a new embankment pit, whatever route that's on, you can see deterioration. We've given all this information to the secretary and they're helping us, you know, get, work through Meta to get, you know, these things taken care of. We are hearing something, and I'd like to bring up, that the original contractors that started are saying that they'll be going to another AI center within a year or two, somewhere in the state, they won't, haven't disclosed, but wherever they go, wherever they're gonna go, whoever knows, I wish we could get those routes, you know, ready, not just up to date of what they need now, but what they're gonna be, you know, subjected to. I'll give you an example, one of our routes, I think it's five eighty-four, probably would be, you know, three and a half inches of hot mix, two inches of binder, inch and a half of wearin'. And the Meta design that they're working on now, it's gonna be six inches of hot mix, which is a lot more structure than what would ever be on that route. But due to the increased traffic, that's what it's gonna require. So, I would love to see, you know, DOTD get ahead, you know, Blue Holt's famous football coach once said that winners plan and prepare and losers react and repair. And, you know, we need to get ahead of this thing. And that kinda goes into my next thing. Secretary? I know. Meta just won't go away. Okay. Uh-oh, went the wrong way. All right, DOTD investment in action, this is for the whole state. We had three hundred and five rigid repairs, one hundred and forty thousand acres treated with herbicide, nineteen thousand miles of curb swept, four hundred thousand plus potholes filled, seven hundred, I mean seventy-five thousand plus cubic yards of litter removed, three hundred miles of ditches cleared, and five hundred thousand acres mowed. That's statewide, but this district is a, you know, does a lot of that, contributes a lot of those numbers. Which leads me into what I really wanna talk about is the LTIF funding. You know, I mentioned that winners react and prepare. The LTIF funding that y'all have given to us has been an unbelievable, made an unbelievable impact in this district. For twenty-four, twenty-five, the project funding, we ended up being able to do a project on LA one thirty-three, another project on US one sixty-five, another one on LA seventeen, another one on US one sixty-seven, and I twenty five forty-four overpass replacement. That, and then also with HB five fifty, we were able to do I twenty Beambel Parish line. The first projects I mentioned were totaled thirty-three point eight million, and then the last HB five fifty for I twenty ended up totaling over around eighteen million dollars that y'all provided funding. That I twenty project, four hundred thousand, those potholes, a bunch of them was on that project on I twenty, and I was talking to Representative Turner. If y'all had not provided that money, which that project is going on right now, Lincoln Parish Maintenance Unit, Unit five fifty would be out there right now throwing cold mix on these potholes. And it's due to the drainage, didn't have the subsurface drainage, was clogged up. Now it's being fully repaired thanks to that money. Last year, I'm gonna run through some numbers really quick and try to be brief. In the area, we separate our district into three areas, okay? And Area A is Lincoln, Jackson, and Union Parish. And we did fourteen different routes laying hot mix for a total of around sixty-seven hundred tons, which is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which there's no way we could have done that without this extra LTIF money. We received a total of seven and a half million. Area B consists of Washtotl and Richland Parish, put out another roughly sixty-seven hundred tons, another, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars. And then in Area C, which is Madison, Morehouse, East and West Carroll Parishes, we put out a total of about fifty-one hundred tons, plus we did a chip seal project on LA six oh three. We also did a district-wide striping job, which covered fourteen different routes. And that total striping job was another four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We also had some bridge and drainage repairs. The bridges were six different routes that we worked on, but using a tree, putting in new treated timbers. And then the drainage covered another additional eleven routes for drainage. Also, we had, we, that totaled about three million dollars of our seven and a half million, and then the other four million dollars came from projects that were let out of the district, and I'm gonna try to lump some, lump some of them together. We did, if y'all remember, we had a drought a few years ago and we had a lot of dead trees. I mean, I'm sure, I know our reps and senators are getting a lot of complaints. We were able to do five different tree cutting projects that covered eight parishes and eliminated all of our dead tree issues due to the drought. We also were able to do some full-depth asphalt repairs in Lincoln and Union Parishes. Same with Madison on US one sixty-five. We were able to do some concrete pavement patching on LA seventeen, concrete pavement patching also on US four twenty-five. We also led a District O five signal radar project, and that covered five different routes. District concrete pavement patching on LA thirty-three and one sixty-seven. And we did a rumble strip, I mean, excuse me, erase pavement marking, marker replacement on multiple parishes. And then also last, we had an asphalt patching project in Madison Parish on US one sixty-five. This year, our in-house money that we're gonna spend in-house is about seven million, and we're gonna do about half in-house forces with overlays and various things. And then the, we'll have two projects, one of them will be I twenty approach slab repairs, and then we're gonna do some more patching on one sixty-seven. As a matter of fact, the one sixty-seven concrete patching will be complete all the way from Jackson with a wind parish line all the way to Arkansas. There will not be any need for any more concrete patching, we get done for a while, I hope. And once again, I just wanna thank y'all for what y'all done. We took this as a challenge, that y'all gave us this money to see what can y'all do. And our design staff was able to put these projects together, our area engineers, Mister Jim Denzmore, ADA of Operations, they come up with the routes that we did overlays on. And I know it's made a difference, I've had a lot of compliments and calls from my representatives and senators. I'm looking at Representative Turner, one thing he told me when this LTIF money started was, I wanna hear complaints about how much construction is going on in this district. And you do have the complaints now, so, you're welcome. But thank y'all for providing this funding for us. We hope it continues, it's allowed us to do things and start planning and preparing instead of just reacting. And I appreciate all the efforts, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mister Canelo. Mister Canelo, one second. Senator Kathy.
It's hot, oh, wish I'd known it was hot before I started talking. Hey, look, thanks for all you do, and I agree with everything that you said about your staff and the great job that they've done and all that. One thing, and we've spoken at length about this, is the medians, particularly along state highways, particularly in the summer, not being able to get in there and mow. Have we made any progress looking at maybe going and spraying versus mowing there? And is there something we need to do to help you be able to do that? And the real example is, and he's not here, so I'll use him as the example, Matt Talbert, the mayor from Starlington, called me and said, hey, can you help me get some money to spray? We'll do it ourselves, it was a town in Starlington, I said, I'll do it to you, I'll give you some money for one year. I gave him, I got him some state money for one year, they issued a contract, it cut the mowings down, made it safer, Natalie, because you don't have weeds in the way. And so, now they've issued that internally going forward. And so, is there any opportunity for us to look at doing this, to cut down on mowings? If we go in and spray these medians, kill the weeds, the grass is naturally never gonna grow more than six or eight inches, and you could really probably move it one time a year instead of the three or four, so we'd probably ultimately save money, or our dollars would go farther. So, that's just, I guess that's a lot of a question, but.
No, and I really liked the question because it kinda ties back into the LTIF money. You know, when you, we haven't had an increase in budget, I don't know when. I've been dealing with, you know, budgets for DOTD in different districts, two different districts since two thousand and twelve, and we haven't had an increase that I, that I was part of. So, when you, when you trying to make two thousand and twelve dollars work in two thousand and twenty-five, it don't work. But with the LTIF money, it's actually allowed us to do just what you're, what you were asking. We did a lot more spraying this year and have come up with those same kind of results. The spraying does cut down the mowing cycles, and it's something we're gonna be looking more into this coming year. And if you have any specific, particular spots, you know, please let me know and we'll, you know, we'll take a look at those.
The entire state, and I mean, it's, it's, no, I, again, I think we're on the same page here, that the spraying, and now's the time to start, right? You know, you start before the grass ever really starts to grow, you get your pre-emerge and all that stuff out. And so, glad to hear that that's kind of a path forward that we're looking at, because I, that is, and I've sent you, you know, look, I've sent you the pictures that people have sent me, you know, we've got places, you know, four or five foot high weeds in the summer, and it's just, it is what it is.
You know, herbicide is so expensive and with such a limited budget, you know, but with, with the LTIF money, it allows us to take our regular budget and purchase these herbicides. Other thing I think Representative Turner can testify to, you know, also the, you know, slope mowing, that's what I call it, where they trim the trees back makes a big difference in sight distance. And I know you've seen a lot of that in Union Parish and Lincoln Parish, you know, recently. So, you know, it's something else that's allowing our forces to do instead of going out and patching potholes while it's raining right now.
Right, right.
One question. Litter, what are we doing on the interstates and what are we doing on our regular highways on litter?
Introduce yourself for the record, sir.
Representative Chris Turner, Lincoln Union Parish, sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. Are we increasing the budget, are we able to increase the budget on litter, picking up trash along the interstate? I know the interstate and the highways are two different things, but it seems to be getting worse along both. And I actually saw Lincoln Parish Sheriff's Department picking up trash in Lincoln Parish when I was twenty, I think it was Wednesday, last Wednesday.
Jim, I may have to get Jim Denzmore to help me with this, but I'm gonna try to answer it, Jim, shake your head, no, you're gonna have to come up here. But we did add one extra cycle of mowing and litter pickup for all of our routes that we do contract mowing and litter, and that also includes municipalities, an extra cycle of litter pickup. I see the Representative Brian shaking his head, so I thank him.
Remember us talking about that, what does it cost to do that? What's the cost of litter?
I'm not sure. Said it varies based on the contract.
As the secretary is coming up, we also have Representative Jackson.
Yeah, Representative Turner, just to add to what you and Senator just said, is obviously, you can see up here, I think we picked up seventy-five thousand cubic yards of litter this year, that I think that's the most in a fiscal year, and we'll do more next year. And so, I think what we're trying to do, particularly with the transformation, is be more efficient every year, but obviously, we are limited with dollars. We, at the District fifty-eight meeting, mowing and litter, particularly more so than other areas of O and M, is, you know, the more money that we can get, obviously, the more litter and mowing, and really, we control what we can do along our highways. And so, we're in good shape there, yep. And so we're in good shape there. Yep.
One second, Mr. Secretary, Representative Phelps.
It was for the general, the district.
Jeff.
And the first question, um, Secretary of the Day, you may remember this, but I wanted to ask you about your.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
Representative Tammy Phelps, District Three. Um, thank you for the report. And the first question was asking about the tree cutting that you mentioned. Was that a part of Long I twenty? And can you explain a little bit about, or was it in the city?
That, that was not part of I twenty, that our contracts was not part of I twenty. The I twenty project was a safety project, and it, it was, if I'm, Natalie, or somebody may have to help me. Uh, we did some in Lincoln Parish, same contracted some in, in Madison Parish. And, and that's the two parishes it covered, but that was a safety project, not LTIF dollars. That was federal dollars.
Can you explain the reason for that? Cause I mentioned that to Secretary, you may remember, how was that going around in certain areas throughout the state of the state? And I did remember seeing it here, and it's some other places, of course, going toward that. And so when it's safety, you all been looking at what for a particular time, if you don't mind explaining?
I guess it's departures from the roadway. Natalie, am I correct on that? Well, what they looking at for safety money for? Clear zone? Natalie, you're gonna have to come up, so.
Yes, and I do see it's very clear, it looks very nice. But just to say, um, not knowing how and why was going on around the state, which is great. So when you say safety, or you're just saying clearing back so we can see, because it actually adds a lot of aesthetics as well.
No, so it's safety money because of, oh, Natalie Sisdrunk, District Traffic Engineer. Um, so it's safety money because it reduces roadway departure fatalities. So when people run off the road and hit a tree, it's likely somebody's gonna get hurt or possibly die. And so when we have those type of crashes, we're able to get safety funding to, um, you know, remove the trees out of the clear zone, which is a certain distance, you know, out, outside of the edge line.
And so that was a report that you all received from fatalities or crashes?
Yeah, it's safety data. And it's also like a systemic approach too, to where it's known that if you remove trees within the clear zone, you're less likely to have those kind of accidents. So there's different ways to get safety money, but the clearing on the interstate was safety money. And then we used LTIF money to remove dead trees in other locations.
No, great explanation. Again, um, it's something that I haven't seen a whole lot of in my lifetime. And we were just talking about how the state looks, um, through, around the state, of course. And just seeing that was very nice to see. And like I said, it does a, actually add aesthetics as well, because it looks clean. Thank you all for considering that. And, and that was the question I'd asked the secretary, and he was gonna look into that, of why, why is that happening around our state? But thank you so much. And I also wanted to say to you, um, when you mentioned the, the patching from Jackson to Arkansas, thank you for even thinking about that, because I'm sure you've heard a lot about, um, how some of us are concerned about how the gateway into our state looks, and I appreciate that. And lastly, um, I may, I don't know, Representative Moore's down there. We've talked a little bit about this, but it's been a few years ago. Um, the first four oh six money that we received, like in, um, twenty-two or twenty-three, um, and I don't know if y'all have completed that yet, I haven't gotten back with Representative Moore. But one of the things I did appreciate is when all of the, uh, representatives and senators got together, the roads that you all chose was throughout your city. It wasn't necessarily per district. And that said a lot about what you all are doing here. And I don't know if y'all have completed that yet, but that made a lot of sense of the roads that are most traveled, where you invest your improvements, and I thank you for the job you've been doing here.
Uh, I appreciate that. I wasn't here when they, when they selected those routes. That was a previous administration, Mr. Marshall Hill. He's out here in the audience. Thank you, Marshall. Um, some, some of those have been completed. We have some left. We actually have had a surplus of money where some of the projects came in under, and we were able to put that back into our preservation money for actually, one of them was Washington Parish, so.
Well, I, I appreciate what's going on here with the representatives and senators from this area. Um, they talk about home a lot. Thank you.
They do a great job for us. I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Representative Phelps and Mr. Canelo. Mr. Secretary.
Well, thank you. Appreciate those comments. And again, thank you so much for your leadership on the LTIF funds. Obviously, that, that money is critical to what Jeff and his team do, so thank you. So with that, we'll transition to the presentation on the Highway Priority Program for FY twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, what we'd like to do is, uh, go through really the overview of the program for the committee and the public. Uh, really tap into what the selection process is. Uh, obviously, with this transformation, we're looking at all ways to improve this process. So over the next year, you will see improvements there, particularly in the, the transparency and communication side, as well as the selection process. But we'll go over for this year, for this fiscal year. And then finally, really finish on the investment. What does that look like for FY twenty-six, twenty-seven for the entire state? And then touch on the district before we close out. And so with that, you know, uh, I'd like you to, obviously, uh, if you can, the public can grab this booklet, as well as the appendices for each district, particularly for this district. Um, but with that, we will kind of go through really, uh, an overview of the HPP. And so, um, as, as a lot of you know, really, every year, this is our ability to have an official prioritized plan for the transportation improvements in our state. And so it outlines which road and bridge projects, uh, will be funded and scheduled for letting. Uh, it guides those decisions on pavement, roads, and bridge repairs, and new interchanges, and identifies all of these projects that are ready for construction. But ultimately, it does ensure that taxpayer dollars are invested effectively in these projects and make sure that we do get public input throughout this process, so we can understand what the public needs, uh, as we develop this book, as well as, um, the future, uh, F, uh, FY twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-eight, twenty-nine Highway Priority Program booklets. And so with that, uh, just wanna go over the goals and objectives. And so, um, I, I know a lot of you really kind of intuitively understand this, but we really have five main goals and objectives. And so you can see there on the screen, the first is really the preservation of the system, uh, really bringing the state highway system into a good state of repair, and then optimize the usage and efficacy of the existing transportation facilities. And so those preservation projects that we often talk about is really kind of the majority of the, uh, of the program. And so that, that's the first goal. The second goal is the operation of the system, really supporting the resiliency of that operation of the transportation system. Also includes, um, the evacuation routes for different emergency events. And then the third category is obviously critical. It is improving the safety of the system. And so whether we're talking about motorized or non-motorized users, safety is critical. It's one of the, the critical, um, goals and objectives of the federal highway system. And so that is, uh, the third category. And then expanding the system as we look at the capacity improvements that are needed. Uh, obviously, expansion is, is critical. And then obviously, improving the quality of life for every citizen in our state is really what this is about. So for those reasons, those are the five main goals and objectives of our annual Highway Priority Program. And so with that, you can imagine that these are broken up into project types. And so you've got preservation, that includes that pavement overlay work, patching and bridge maintenance, uh, and really everything that we need to do to maintain the system in a good state of repair. Uh, the second is the capacity side, really the work that we do to provide additional lanes, uh, expanding the roadways, uh, obviously expanding connections, looking at new interchanges and other improvements, really to expand the system, the capacity of the system, and relieve congestion. Uh, we have the operations and motorist services category, looking at ways to include traffic signal lighting, uh, drainage repairs and other things, as well as the safety side, whether it's guardrails, intersection improvements, et cetera. And then finally, the miscellaneous category, we've got a number of, of efforts that you'll see here in that booklet that fall into that. And then finally, uh, all of these projects are broken down really by phase. And so you can see, uh, the projects that are scheduled for letting that will actually go to construction this fiscal year is the majority of what we, uh, what we have in this booklet, but also projects that are in the pre-construction engineering and design phase. So you got those projects in development. Everything that we need to do, take it from concept to the environmental process, to the actual plans and specifications. And then finally, we have projects that are awaiting funding. Uh, a lot of those projects that are in development, we're trying to secure federal dollars to match with our state monies to get that to construction, so that we can include in the construction effort of this Highway Priority Program. And so that is really that broad overview that I talked about that's covered, uh, in this guidebook. In addition to that, wanted to go through the project selection process. And so obviously, with those goals and objectives, those are actually broken out into eight categories, uh, eight priorities that are in revised statute forty-eight to twenty-nine point one. And you can see those there, whether we're talking about the preservation side, bringing it to a good state of repair, improving safety, the resiliency side, increasing accessibility, economic development, intermodal connectivity, innovation and use of technology, or protecting the environment. You have those eight parties that are in our state revised statute, and then those can be linked to each of these goals that we just went over, those five goals and objectives. And so you can see that there on the screen. And so with that, uh, we do a lot of work, uh, that we'll go through to identify projects and then recommend them in this plan. But that process is laid out here. And so it goes from the identification to the recommendation of projects that go in the HPP. This is then delivered to the, to the Joint Transportation Committee, to all of you on October first. And then that eventually leads us into this roadshow, so that we can present that to you into the public, and then eventually go to the legislature for final acceptance and approval. And so that is the Highway Priority Program process. And so just wanted to cover that for everyone, uh, here today. Through this process, obviously, there's a lot of work that goes into the identification phase. Uh, you know, here at the department, we do a ton of work to gather and analyze data. You've got the conditions of the roadways and bridges themselves, where we're constantly gathering data, the operational, uh, data that we gather, safety, congestion, et cetera. All of that goes into this process. And then we utilize, uh, stakeholder input, um, from all, a variety of, uh, of different means throughout the year to come to this conclusion. And so whether it's, uh, the public, state and local elected officials, our metropolitan organizations, NPOs, rural and other organizations throughout the year, we're making sure that we collect this information to provide the most effective use of our taxpayer dollars. And then, uh, as we do that process, you can see that technical analysis, that stakeholder input, we're working with our project selection teams to really make recommendations, uh, understand the stakeholder input, really cross-reference it to our state's long-range plan. Every ten years, we have this plan, so we want to understand, you know, regionally, as well as, uh, over a decade-long process, what this means to us for the state, and then available funding. How much funding do we have from both the state, as well as the federal government, to really build effective projects? And so working with that, considering all of the factors that are in this booklet that you see every year, um, making the best decisions that we can, uh, to, uh, provide the best Highway Priority Program that we can every single year. And so with that, uh, really consulting the DOTD, uh, headquarters officials, our district team, representatives, joint transportation, as well as, uh, federal, local, and private sector associations, we make those decisions, and then that leads us to where we are today, which is these public meetings. And so, um, through this process, we'll gain, we'll gain more input from the public and from yourselves. And then that will allow us to make, uh, recommendations for this final Highway Priority Program to deliver to you in the next legislative session. And so just wanted to cover that overall process before we jump into the investment. So with that, I'll go over the state's investment in this HPP, as well as what it looks like for the district. And so really what you're looking at today, what's in front of you, is a one-point-two-billion-dollar investment in transportation infrastructure for the state. And so this is what's in the plan. Obviously, this does not cover any non-recurring funds that we would receive in the legislative session next year. So that, that would add to this. And so that LTIF money would be in addition to this one-point-two-billion-dollar investment. So it's a significant investment, um, when we're looking at it. Of that nine-hundred-and-thirteen-million dollars is actually in construction. So when we talk about the letting phase, nine-hundred-and-thirteen-million-dollar projects are set to be let in FY twenty-six and twenty-seven, and that represents three-hundred-and-two projects across the state. So that's a significant investment into construction, almost a billion dollars. Uh, the remainder, two-hundred-and-twenty-million is in pre-construction. So all that work that we do on the planning, environmental, and engineering and design stage is two-hundred-and-twenty-million. And then another seventy-million for engineering during construction services inspection, as well as contingency efforts for those construction projects. And so that represents that total one-point-two-billion-dollar price tag. And then when you look to your right there on that, that pie chart, you can see the different categories that we talked about that was in that overview. The preservation side, the biggest chunk there is helping to preserve our highways and bridges. That's five-hundred-and-fifty-three-million. We've got another, uh, hundred-and-one-million dollars in operations, seventy-four-million in safety, and then a hundred-and-eighty-five-million in miscellaneous projects that are a variety of different categories. And so I'll just touch on each one of these. Uh, obviously, the, the, uh, preservation side being the largest first. We've got both non-interstate and interstate preservation. So on that non-interstate, as you can imagine, we've got both the state, the national highway system, and non-federal aid, uh, non-interstate roadways. We also have obviously interstate pavement work that we're doing. Um, the road preventative maintenance work falls in this category as well. And then finally, that bridge work, that bridge preservation, which is both on-system and off-system. So that makes up that total five-hundred-and-fifty-three-million with, uh, the two-hundred-million roughly is both, is on the on-system bridge, uh, component of this. Uh, on the operations motorist services side, we've got a number of things. When you look at both intelligence, uh, traffic services, as well as traffic, um, control devices, that makes up kind of a big chunk of this. We've got the work that we do on the roadway flooding side for resiliency. You've got waste stations, interstate lighting, rest areas, uh, access management, ferries, movable bridge, preventative maintenance, the ADA program, those are all major categories within this hundred-and-one-million-dollar for the operations and motorist services. And then, of course, safety is a, a large component of our program. Um, obviously, we have railroad safety that goes into this, but we also have highway safety across the state, uh, whether it's guardrails or intersection improvements, other things, that's all part of that Highway Safety Program bucket, roughly sixty-two-million dollars this year. And then finally, as I mentioned, that miscellaneous category, we've got a number of things in there. You've got intermodal connectors, our roadway, uh, transfer program is there. We've got the, uh, federal electric vehicle program that's mandated by the feds, it's the NEVI program. We've got TAP, the Transportation Alternative Projects, as well as urban systems, congestion mitigation, and a number of other things that make up this bucket. Sorry. And then finally, within this, this, uh, district, we have thirty-seven projects across all of these parishes, uh, a major investment for this region. Uh, as Jeff said, uh, a lot of the ongoing work with LTIF, um, is, is in addition to this as well. And so a ton of work in this, this area. Uh, we thank you for your leadership to help us get here and, and all of the work that we're doing. I will say, you know, kudos to the DOTD team. All of that work is being delivered on time and on or under budget. And so, uh, Eric and, uh, his team are doing a great job to help, uh, really transform project delivery in the department. And so hopefully, you can see that with all of the work that we're doing. Uh, but with that, Mr. Chairman, that'll conclude the HPP presentation for FY twenty-six, twenty-seven. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Um, what we're gonna do is move into what many of us on the committee feel is the most important part of, of the meeting. And in fact, uh, it is why we're here, is to have public comment. This is part of the process, this is an integral part of the process, as the secretary mentioned. And, and before you leave the podium, uh, I do want to clarify, for, for the benefit of the committee and the legislature by and large, we've, uh, we sometimes get public comments on, on a particular road, a particular bridge, as being problematic in any part of the state. Uh, if those projects don't make it into that particular fiscal year Highway Priority Program, I think it's important that we continue to monitor those projects that they were submitted. And if there's an issue with, whether a fiscal constraint or right-of-ways, so forth and so on, uh, why that project didn't make it. Uh, so the individuals who are charged with pushing, uh, for improvements, they at least understand why those projects didn't make it into the, into the program. So, uh, I, I think it's beneficial for us.
Yes, sir.
To consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
What we're gonna do is, uh, call you to the microphone. If you would, please introduce yourself for the record, uh, and keep your comments towards the, uh, Highway Priority Program or transportation issues in the region. First up, we have Randy Walters.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'm Randy Walters, I'm with the.
I'm with the East Carroll Parish Police Jury. And prior to that, actually, same time, the the port priority program was getting started in Baton Rouge. And I can tell you that one of the best programs I've ever been around. It's continually making funds available for the ports and things where they don't have to wait on different things, from New Orleans all the way to Lake Providence. So we're tickled to death with that part of it. The other comment I have is, and I'm kind of glad that we showed the picture of the meta thing, but it didn't really show the real picture. The real picture is all the roads coming in from East Carroll Parish, Madison Parish and all over. Tremendous amount of traffic and our roads are being wore out due to the heavy track that's coming through, going to the meta facility hauling aggregate. And I'd just like to know, how are we going to address that when meta made the construction and all may be gone? Okay, that's it. Well, I mean, I would like to because it's a big thing in East Carroll. And I know it is in Madison. We were in East Carroll Parish. We probably, most of the aggregate, it comes through the port. And they probably have four to five different roads that they take coming out of East Carroll Parish to go to Holly Ridge. And that means that's five different roads that's being torn up along the way as well. And I mean, we would, I would like to see as well as the jury and other folks in East Carroll and probably the other parishes to know what's going to happen. Because it's going to be a tremendous cost to fix those roads. And how are you going to be fixing them when they're trying to still have traffic on? And people are going to have to detour or go around and not a good idea. Hope it can, I mean, I think it can happen. I just would like to know what the plan would be and main thing, where is the money coming from?
Senator Catherine.
Yep, thanks. I'm glad you asked that. We're actually talking about this before because I've I've had this conversation with a couple of road contractors. I said, because I I've got an email to my office asking the same question in a little bit different, different manner. It was just, hey, what's going to happen with the roads? How are we going to fix these or is meta going to pay for it? And so what I would say is that every bit, every truck that's added to the road is paying local gas taxes or they're paying gas taxes, right? So for example, we did the math. The dirt hauled from West Monroe to the site in Holly Ridge, just the side off that's about 100 trucks a day, will be about four and a half to $5 million just this year in additional gas taxes that'll be paid. So that's where the revenue will come from to make the necessary repairs will be from the same way that we get revenue to pay for every other road. It's the the increased traffic will provide increased dollars to make the necessary repairs. You're already seeing in the areas around the the site in Richland Parish where meta is actually stepping up and making repairs. We're also seeing some bridges on Highway eighty ahead of schedule that are being upgraded and improved right now that are going from wooden span bridges to concrete bridges. So those improvements are already being made. I understand the concern and it's it's a valid one. And I do think that there is, there is going to be dollars there to make those necessary changes, either from the increased gas taxes or from meta just stepping up and making the the improvements themselves, which they've already begun to do.
So we'll use East Carroll Parish for one. And most of the taxes there are coming from the farm. But those trucks are leaving, they come in and go in. There are not many of them staying in East Carroll, but they're driving on the roads. They they stay in somewhere and they'll come through and they'll get their, get their rock and they'll come to Holly Ridge and here we go. And I mean, for the folk, people that hadn't been over there, you need to go. There's something to be said in a little rural parish like Holly Ridge.
Sure, absolutely. No, and and look, the the gas tax are actually paid at the at the terminal where they you actually go buy your refined petroleum, right? But so those taxes, you're so you're going to see increased volume, which is going to be increased tax dollars, which will be there to make the necessarily improvements there on the roads.
Where is there any way to monitor that where we will know how much East Carroll is going to get out of the sale, out of the tax, gas tax?
I would have, that's that's a revenue secretary question. And actually, I think that's a very valid question. And I'm happy to ask, you know, hey, can we track these dollars to see, you know, where they're being generated?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you. Stacy Mitchell.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Mayor Stacy Mitchell for City of West Monroe. And I actually have several things to ask about or make comments about. One, I do want to say thank you for the committee for coming up here and hearing all of our concerns. I also want to say thank you to our District Five, our local people. Every time I call them or see them anywhere, they're always very helpful and want to know what they can do. So I do appreciate that. Also want to say thank you because just recently or in the last couple of years, Highway eighty in West Monroe was redone very nicely. It was done at night and everything seemed to go real well. So I want to say thank you. All right, questions that I have are to start is one is the I-20 widening in West Monroe. It was scheduled to be from LA thirty-four Stella Mill exit out to Well Road. It's the non-elevated portion of I-20 and was going to be widened to six lanes. DOTD, it was announced it was going to be done. DOTD came and did some public sessions in West Monroe. Actually talking about where a sound barrier wall would be. And then now it's, I saw it in your, in this one, it doesn't have a date in it, but it's not in our MP, in MPT anymore. And so I'm just trying to find out, you know, where it is because it is definitely needed. If you drive west across the river in the evenings, especially four thirty to six P.M., it is, it is jam-packed. In fact, it comes to a stop, especially in that area between Stella and Thomas Road exit. It will come to a stop because the traffic is so thick. So that is a project that I would like to see moved up in priority or given a date or or some explanation on why, because I've asked multiple times and nobody can really give me an answer on where it went. So that's one. And then secondly, I would like to put in my two cents on a time during a project that it takes to get a project through to the time of actual construction. Many times that is, you know, multiple years. And the cost estimation when it is, you know, I guess, just estimated by the engineers will be an amount and we budget for that. But then when it actually comes time to construction, it's nothing for it to be, you know, one and a half to two times that amount. And so that's very difficult, you know, with a budget. And I'm sure you're aware, just like the state has, but it's very difficult with a budget to then prioritize your projects and keep them moving. So I'd love to see that time cut down. I also want to put my two cents in for urban systems. And I know that if I understand right, that's federal highway money that comes through the state. It comes to Washoe Parish or OCOG, Washoe Council on Governments. So the City of West Monroe, City of Monroe, Washoe Parish Police Jury, we work together. They have a tack that goes in and prioritizes project. It is a fantastic program, in my opinion. The problem is it's just not an I think we have, where's Doug Mitchell, what, five, five or six years worth of projects ready to go? And it would be less expensive on the state if they could get funded quicker now at today's prices than prices five years from now. But that that really is a good program. It works well because we work with the City of Monroe and Washoe Parish Police Jury on prioritizing urban system projects within our parish. So I want to say that's a good project and I'd love to see more funding to that. On the mowing, I want to say thank you. We, I think this municipality, City of West Monroe, we actually do our own mowing and litter pickup. And I do want to say thank you. We got, I think, two extra cuttings this year, so thank you for that. It still does not cover the cost of it by any means, but we're, but we're very happy with that. My question, and I want to say thank you to Representative Turner for bringing it up, but the interstate, the elevated portion of the interstate is, it's a mess a lot of times. In fact, most of the time. And that's probably one of the comments I get most or complaints that I get most from constituents is how do we get debris and things off the elevated part of the interstate? And that's, you know, obviously from about, I guess, Fifth Street exit, you know, across the river, however far it goes before it goes down in Monroe, on the Monroe side, on the east side. But that that could be definitely improved. There's a lot of times there's, I mean, I know the tow companies are supposed to move the bumpers and things like that, but a lot of times there's just a lot of debris on the side of the road. Other than safety, it's, you know, it's very ugly as well there. Making sure I'm on my list here. And I think that's how all I had on my list. So I just again, want to say thank you. But again, the I-20 widening, the six lanes is is very important and would be a tremendous improvement.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Secretary, if someone from the district could give just a general update on the I-20 widening, if 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 available.
I'm Matthew French. I'm the Assistant District Administrator for District Oh Five. So the the project Mayor Mitchell was referencing, if you look on page sixteen of twenty-five, it's at the bottom. It's in the projects and development phase. So this project originally was funded, I believe, through some IIJA money that was given to to this part of the state for this project, which was was to widen the interstate to six lanes from the section that she spoke of. So originally, it was estimated to cost somewhere around 50 million. We we got a consultant that's working on it and and they're pretty far along with the design. They've they've run into some some issues that that weren't expected. There's some clearance issues under the existing overpasses that that we have to maintain a certain clearance. By adding those lanes, we ended up having to do a lot of work to to maintain the clearance that we have. And, you know, there have been some some instances through the corridor where where we've had trucks hit the overpasses, which is very detrimental to the structure, the overpasses, the traffic. So through that anyway, the plus through inflationary costs over the last few years, I mean, the the price of the project has grown till we're sitting about 90 million. So if you look there on that sheet and you and you look at the bottom, that forty-nine, seven, forty, which is, you know, 49 million, so 50 million, it has the NFI by it that it, that means it doesn't have those funds. So right now, the project is kind of in a holding pattern until, you know, some supplemental funding is realized to to close that gap. So it's still a project. There's still a lot of, you know, design work that's been done. The the problem with it is it doesn't have the funds. You know, we've, we've used preservation money, capacity money, the IJ money, and and now it's still short. So that that's kind of where we're at until we're able to find funding from some other internal source through DOTD or some supplementing funding somewhere else, that the the project is is kind of in a holding pattern.
How much are you short?
It's, but right at 50 million.
So so what you're short, the the inflationary increase?
Right. And and there were some specific design that until you actually get into it, you wouldn't have known, like that that you would have had to do. But but most of it is through inflationary costs that that we've seen, you know, over the last, you know, few years since that project first got realized.
Thank you. Next up, Frank. In South Louisiana, we would say the Tejez. That's probably not what you're going to say up here. And my last name is Boryak, so I get it hammered all the time, believe me.
Frank the Tejez.
Tejez, yeah.
The Tejez. Just believe, only by grace. Thank you all so much for listening to our comments and giving us the opportunity, citizens to give an opportunity to express theirs. Mine is on the one sixty-five South bypass, the turning lanes. There are turning lanes on some exits, but not all. And and it's kind of, you can easily have an accident when you're trying to turn right, you know, because state law says you can't turn if there's no, no turning line. So that means when the lights get, when the light gets ready to stop or or the traffic is moving, you have to slow down and the cars are running 50 miles an hour. Thank you so much for for your, the opportunity to express my opinion.
Thank you, sir. And my apologies on the pronunciation there. Representative Thompson. Next up, Johnny Gibson. Once? Twice? Kevin Crosby.
Kevin Crosby with Lassenbin Associates in West Monroe. I'm the parish engineer for the police jury as well as do work for the City of Monroe and West Monroe. I too would like to thank y'all for making the trip up to meet with us each year. The first item is the urban systems, the same thing Mayor Mitchell said. We get roughly 3.1 million a year. That's split in between three entities. This is one of the best programs that we have in our area. It's an eighty-twenty split, so the funding, there is some local funding that have some skin in the game. The group at headquarters does a, does a good job of getting these project plans reviewed and sent back out. So it's, it's a, it's a good pro, it's a good program. It works. Just wish there was more funding to go with it. The police jury, and you'll hear more of this after the first of the year. I got up and spoke on this last year, a proposed interchange on I-20 at Vansel Road, which is about a little over a mile west of Well Road. So you've got multiple subdivisions in that area as well as a large middle school. DOTD has a widening project that they're looking at on Highway eighty now from Well Road out to the school. That project may not need to be built. If this interchange was built, I think the interchange is going to be roughly 30 to 50 million dollars. The next item is parish transportation funds. The police jury gets this back each year, it's about 1.1 million. They use those funds basically to match the urban systems projects. And that hasn't changed since I've been involved with the jury since 2012. The next item, not really any action on the meta. I just want to, want to mention DOTD at headquarters and the district has done a heck of a job. Secretary brought his entire staff up, was in a meeting. And a lot of, like they said, a lot of the state roads around that area are being improved, rebuilt. A local contractor, D and J Construction, they've, they've got a representative in the crowd. We're doing the inspection along with ICE. But DOTD, instead of saying no, they've all, they they have looked at every option before they tell you, hey, we can't do that. They'll say, let let us make a couple of calls and see. So Mr. Canelo's group has been extremely easy to work with on that project. I know that's a difficult project with them just from the sheer volume and the number of miles that this affected. But the secretary has provided great leadership. Just want to tell y'all, thank y'all, and DOTD is doing a good job on that.
Any questions? Not from me. Unless you want some questions. Taj Khan.
Thank you all for giving me opportunity to give a public comment. I'm owner of a gas station located on I-65 South. Address is one zero nine, oh, sorry, three zero one nine, Highway one sixty-five. My concerns are safety of our customers. We don't have any southbound turning lane and access to the gas station and truck stop. So all our customers have to travel one mile down south before they come to our gas station. So not only that, we have a Greyhound stop as well, a U-Haul. A lot of big trucks coming in and they're having difficulty returning in. So I will request you all to expertise if there is any turning lane or traffic light, not only traffic, but pedestrian, pedestrian crossing from across the street, that's also a danger. So if you can have a traffic light and turning, that'll be great. Thank you.
And for the record, please give us the name.
Taj Khan.
Thank you, sir. One second. Representative Moore. One second. Representative Moore.
I want to thank you first of all for coming. He's in his business in my district and we communicate often. I am so grateful that we have a truck stop on this side, on South Side. That is important because of a lot of times, the trucks, the truck drivers, they park on the side of the roads and so forth, and which could be a safety issue and cause other problems. But I appreciate what you're doing. He is really in need of a turning lane there. And I do appreciate what DOTD had to do. I'm aware of what they had to do. It was closer, it wasn't really designated as a road, but the truck drivers were using it. And of course, it could be a safety issue. But we will hopefully look at that. I hope you all can continue to look at it maybe as an emergency type thing, as a safety issue. And later on, before, when we end, maybe you can meet, or you've already talked with DOTD, if I'm not mistaken about it. But I do support what he's trying to do. I know that they're looking at possibly, you know, looking at a turning lane there. But the quicker we can get that done, we have the community as a whole has come together and they have taxed themselves through a road district, Mr. Secretary, to put lights all up in one sixty-five in that area, and it has made a difference with fatality. And of course, his store, his business is right in that area. But he has been calling, wanting our assistance and possibly a turning lane. I don't know if we have emergency dollars to help in that area. But again, we certainly don't need to lose that business. So again, thank you for coming and keeping me in the loop of your need.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Khan. Thank you, Representative Moore. Dana McGee. Is that first name right? Or is it Dana? Okay, there was two N's in there, so. Please introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Dana McGee. I reside in Washtot Parish, Washtot Parish, and I'm from the Charming Dale subdivision. And I don't want you all to forget it. So I'm gonna say it a number of times. The Charming Dale subdivision. We are located at one sixty-five South. I'm here today just to share a concern, a concern about safety. We are here today to urgently share our concerns about the serious safety hazards caused by the deteriorating road conditions in Charming Dale, Charming Dale subdivision. For years, we have appealed to both former and current police jurors for help. Yet the road conditions have continued to decline. These dangerous conditions put everyone at risk. School buses, EMTs, fire trucks, trash services, postal worker vehicles, every resident that must travel these roads daily. At this time, no vehicles or individuals can safely navigate these roads. Because these conditions pose an immediate threat to the public safety and essential services, we are requesting state emergency funding and any other funding allowed to repair and stabilize the roads in Charming Dale subdivision. This is not just a matter of convenience. It's a crucial safety issue that put lives, property, and essential services at risk. Investing in this reconstruction project prevents further vehicle damages, support emergency services, improve the overall quality and appearance of our community when traveling through the subdivision, Charming Dale subdivision. The drivers must constantly navigate deep potholes, unlevel road surfaces, creating dangerous conditions for school buses, EMTs, fire trucks, trash services, postal service vehicles, and every resident who relies on these streets. We need your help. The residents of Charming Dale urgently need and fully deserve this emergency assistance. Charming Dale subdivision. Thank you.
One second. Representative Moore?
Yes. First of all, Ms. Dana McGee and those who came with her, if you will, just stand any of those who are representing Charming Dale that's here. Okay, I appreciate you. I'm aware that several people wanted to come, but of course, they couldn't get off on work. Charming Dale is not in my district. It used to be. Representative Neil Reiser is his district. I can tell you, Ms. Secretary, that we've had conversation. Unfortunately, he was out of town at a conference, I believe, and that's why he's not here. He either has already planned to go through there and see. I did take a trip through there. It took me about an hour to go through this subdivision because of the conditions of the roads. And so we're gonna be working together to try to see. But I think, Mr. Jeff, did you get a chance to go out there? Because Representative Reiser really was asking for his comments too.
Please introduce yourself again for the record.
Jeff Canelo, District Engineer Administrator for District 05. Yes, Representative Moore, I was able to ta, take a ride out there and and it is in bad shape. You know, there's nothing as a district level we could do. I did think of one thing and it had to be in conjunction with the Washtot Parish Police Jury, you know, maybe a possible road transfer where they could get monies and they could spend the money however they wanted. But, you know, other than emergency money from the legislature.
And the reason why, Ms. McGee, that he's saying that is because it's a, not only a subdivision, but it's in the Washtot Parish. And of course, this is state. But is, I know I saw Mr. Kevin Crosby. Is he still here? He left?
Oh, he he, he's still here. He's just hiding.
Come to the hottest seat. Yes. Is there anything you can say on behalf?
Yes, they are.
Oh, they want you to come to the mic because they're recording though. And repeat what you said, if you don't mind. But again, I'm not sure if I've received or Representative Neil has received like any type of capital outlay application or anything. I don't know if that's the case, if you will, Mr. Kevin Crosby, if you would kind of see if that's something too that they can do as police jury.
Yes, ma'am, the police jury is aware of the.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
Kevin Crosby with Lazenbun Associates. Police jury is aware of the condition of all of those roads. A lot of the issue is lack of drainage. One of the, one of the roads in there has a horseshoe and it has, it it's a horseshoe, basically like, looks like a U. And it has zero, and it has zero drainage. So every time it rains, it, water just stands. It's no ditches to go out of it. It's no the the cost of it is what's, is what the police jury is looking at now of where to try to get the funding for. We've got soil borings on that horseshoe section of roadway. There are some large trucks that, I guess, the residents drive trucks or something that, but there's been trucks, you know, heavier trucks parked there when we were there. There's also a utility project that just went through there. And it doesn't look like they are finished with repairing the roads where they damaged them either. But I'm gonna get their name and number. And the the police jury in that area is is well aware of it, and I have looked at it. And they're not, they're not finished looking at it yet. They're they're gonna do something with with the roads.
Representative Reiser, when you said they're having trucks, do we have signs up there telling them that they can't bring the trucks?
Yeah.
So the trucks, the signs that there just needs to be enforced locally. And I think when I was talking to Representative Reiser, we were talking, of course, we're very concerned because we have the Washtot Parish Fire Department. We have the schools, buses transferring in there. We certainly don't want to see a bus flip. But that is possibly on those roads. So is there, is there a capital outlay or anything that can be submitted? Or is there anything with emergency? This is what Representative Reiser and I were talking about. Emergency dollars that could possibly exist.
My experience with the emergency dollars is three to five hundred thousand dollars is about the cap of what we have normally asked for in the past. And three to five hundred thousand is not gonna touch. It it looks like they slicked off gumbo, just just clay, high PI material, and laid asphalt on it. So every road in there would have to be rebuilt if you're gonna do it correctly. But but the first thing you gotta do is get drainage.
Which they are working on. Washtot, Greater Washtot is out there. They've removed.
They had some manholes and some water lines that they've repaired out there.
They're they're actually in the process because it's on my corner. They've removed the um the pump. And they're, they're putting it back on their right of way, which is next to two of my properties. And so they're moving it from the corner to their right of way. And so the drainage they're working on. But we've been before the police jury for years, for years, requesting some help. Again, it's a safety concern because vehicles, people's lives. I work Monday through Friday. It's just not safe. And so we are needing some help. The Charming Dale subdivision, we need some help. And Mr. Kevin is familiar with me. Mr. Lonnie Hudson, he's familiar with me. Not just me, but the Charming Dale subdivision. Ms. Pat Moore, she's familiar with the Charming Dale subdivision. And so this is a concern for us as a taxpayer. You know, we deserve it. We deserve it just like everybody else. So that's why we are here. I'm here. We are here, standing and sharing our concerns with you all. And I definitely thank you all for the opportunity.
Mr. Kevin, if you will, I I know that Representative Neil would have been here if he wasn't out of town. Maybe if you can get with him and I'm also, if you don't mind, you can include me in that. We certainly have gone out there and I don't know how the state can help with the police jury. But I can tell you that there is a state road also. Herman Johnson is a state road. And so when they come off of Herman Johnson and turn into that subdivision, you still got busted. So I don't know, but I I am in agreement with, it's a safety issue. Maybe the federal safety dollars or, again, we, I I don't think we've seen anything come from you all about whether it's drainage or or the road itself.
Police jury did the back drainage ditch behind the, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think we'll we'll get with Kevin and his team and then get with y'all to make sure that we we open that dialogue, do anything that we can. And certainly, as Mr. Canelo said, road transfer program is something to look at. I don't know, you know, we we certainly have a program that has a backlog, but we can certainly work with y'all on any avenue that we can to help resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Thank you, Representative Moore. Thank you, Ms. McGee. And Mr. Crosby. Oh, you had something else?
Oh, no.
Jennifer Marusak. Actually, I think she waves. Mr. Walters did a great job of discussing the importance of the port priority program. I think that was sufficient testimony for the highway priority program. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members, I'm Jennifer Marusak. I'm Executive Director of the Ports Association of Louisiana. Actually, I've made about as many of these road shows as you have all over the years, almost except for Representative Thompson, of course. But I actually started off lobbying here at the Monroe Chamber of Commerce until I moved down to Baton Rouge to work with one of your esteemed colleague's father for Governor Foster. It's been a while. In fact, I'm about to start my twenty-ninth year. But you know, I want to start off by saying that I appreciate the work the chairman and others did during the last legislative session for DOTD. I especially appreciate that they didn't change operations in the Office of Multimodal Commerce, which I believe Deputy Secretary Cormier had already focused and streamlined before she took her new job in ti, in charge of the entire department's transformation. I know this is historically a road show about roads and bridges within the respective districts. But how can we possibly have a conversation about our state's transportation system without including our amazing twenty-nine active port system? The Ports Association is working on these issues for years and years, and we're not going to stop. What I love about working infrastructure issues is that they're nonpartisan. They cross every geographic region in our state, whether we're speaking of the booming LNG industry in Lake Charles and Cameron Parish, Mr. Chairman, or if we're talking about having yet another record year of container cargo and cruise passengers sail in and out of the port of New Orleans, the port of South Louisiana ranking number two in the Western Hemisphere for most tons of cargo, and the number one trade zone, Port Fushon now servicing a hundred percent of all deepwater rigs and platforms in the Gulf of Mexico, are the fastest growing inland port in the nation, right here in this district at the port of Lake Providence. Louisiana's port system affects every economic status, political party, and race in the exact same way. They drive not only our states, but our nation's economy. Our five Mississippi River ports comprise the largest port complex in the world. Louisiana ports carry twenty-five percent of US waterborne commerce. Now we're carrying eighty percent of the nation's grain and twenty percent of the nation's coal. And most of that grain is coming out of your four port system here along the Upper Mississippi River, where you have Lake Providence, you have Madison, you have Vidalia and Tensas. Including all of our rivers and intercoastal waterways, we have a magnificent fourteen thousand five hundred mile economic driver sitting at every one of our doorsteps. So I'll cut to the chase. Port relied industries are one in five jobs in the state. One in five jobs. That's forty to forty-five percent more than the oil and gas industry. Our deepwater ports support global trade. Our coastal ports enable the energy industry, and our inland ports drive local economies. So what do we need? We need additional infrastructure for port and deeper port channels for future opportunities. I'm going to get down to where we are with the port priority program. You all oversee approval of the port priority program. For the last ten years, we've been fortunate enough to get thirty-nine point four million dollars for the program. But we are not statutorily obligated to get a dime. To simplify the program, they're distributed, taking into account jobs created or jobs retained determined by the state's economists. Most of our ports also need this basic infrastructure, though, to create these additional jobs. You know, when Texas had an influx of money two years ago, they called me to go explain our port priority program to them. And that's how they distributed, distributed their half a billion dollars. Half a billion dollars is what they distributed. Two weeks ago, the Mississippi Ports Association asked me to go up there and explain our port priority program to them because they'd heard so much about it. Now, they made some progress, as you all did during the last couple of sessions. They eliminated their income tax, but at the same time, they increased their gas tax and dedicated a portion of that to their port system. By the way, you see the backlog for the highways and bridges program. Our port priority program backlog right now is two hundred and seventeen million dollars. Two hundred and seventeen million dollars. And the most relevant fact I want you to keep in mind is since its inception in nineteen eighty-nine, the port priority program has gotten a total of seven hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. And when you have the surplus, we got zero. We got zero into the port program. So any additional dollars you can find to throw our way, we appreciate it. We appreciate everything you do for us. I know a lot of ports come and ask you for port, for capital outlay dollars as well. But I like to concentrate on the port priority program, which services the entire port industry. And DOTD has determined that the state receives eight dollars in taxes, jobs, and benefits for every one dollar invested in our port system. So if that's not a return on investment, I don't know what is. Thank you for your time, members.
Uh, Ms. Marusak, you don't have to come back. I just, I just want to highlight one thing. You talked about Mississippi eliminating their income tax. You talked about Mississippi eliminating their income tax. They phased out their income tax. It'd be 2031 before you're paying less income tax in Mississippi than Louisiana. So just want to highlight that because.
That, that concludes our public comment. Representative Thompson, did, did you have a question?
Couple of comments if I might. First of all, Mr. Chairman, thank you for letting me be here. And the members, I'm sorry I was late, but I had some state business I was tending to. And I just got here in the nick of time. I'd like to ask you, is it anybody here from the fifth district today? One. Where's your caravan? We, I'd like for someone that might want to explain some of this. The, the bridge, I noticed it's in the, in, in the program for this year. The ri- bridge that goes Interstate 20 and it comes through Madison Parish into Richland Parish. And it's been out of order. Can you imagine if you live in one of the other parishes that Interstate goes through and you've got a bridge that you have to take turns to get across it on Highway 80? Some of you may live on Highway 80. Very busy highway, almost as busy as Interstate. It's just doesn't have the capacity. I would like to, a quick statement on what needs to be done after you tell me. When will it be done? I understand they, as the feds are gonna make you do that. So if you could do that, and then I've got two more short. If you, Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me. Yes, sir.
Jeff Canelo, District Administrator for District O five. He's talking about the US 80 Bayou Mason Bridge. It is currently one lane with a traffic signal, temporary traffic signal. Rated for five tons. We're lucky it's even open. Looks like it's gonna be let in September of 2026. It, it is a high priority for this district. A lot of y'all are not aware on the committee, but US 80 is the official detour for I-20. So if we have a closure on I-20, that US 80 is the official detour and it's got a five ton bridge on it. So it, it has been moved up as, as quick as I think it could be possible and let for September 2026, which is really good.
We, we're violating a lot of rules and regulations because we don't have the money to do it at this particular time. It's been put off, put off and put off. And you're aware of that, I'm not. We're doing the best we can do.
Yeah, you know, it, it got rated to five tons and, you know, we, we looked at the possibility of trying to rehab it. And there was, it's not just, there's a bad girder on one of the outside girders we thought we could replace. But the, we've been told by headquarters bridge that the whole deck is just, you know, there's nothing we can do to rehab it.
Well, I appreciate what the chairman's doing and the committee members. And we've got a senator here from our district and I've shared that. Not particularly area, two senators, excuse me. Other comment or question that I had or about the new meta explosion over here with, that's where the most of us have been today. We've got a lot of highway traffic. I don't know exactly what it is, but it's more than we can handle almost. It's dangerous in places. But I, and I am in support of what the highway department's doing and the chairman of the committee and the committee, what they're working to do. But we've got to make sure that those bridges in those areas and also the overlaying has to stay in order. Do you have any comment about how and what they're doing to accommodate safety first and getting to the locations second?
Yeah, thank you. Great question, Representative Thompson. Glenn Lode, Secretary DOTD. I think it's a great segue. I was gonna mention in the closing, we had a comment earlier, but I think we're working hand in hand with LED as well as Meta to make sure that that is addressed throughout construction. And so whether it's the improvements that you're seeing that we're doing at the department, the work that LED is funding and that's being done through them as well as the work that Meta is doing, making sure that we address safety as well as preservation of all of those transportation systems in and around the Meta facility. So I know there's been a few comments here. I know that the governor's office, obviously that's a key priority and certainly want to address your concerns there each and every day. And so we're trying to make sure that we can do that each and every day. Obviously, you know, long term, we, we went and met with the Meta folks. We brought our entire leadership team to understand what their peak of construction is going to look like. And then as that starts to wind down so that we can address those needs. And so we're coming up with plans for each and, each and every one of those things, whether it's oversized loads or just the preservation of the system. We understand what that's gonna take and we can work with Meta and LED to try to fund that and make sure we can keep up with that. And then obviously repair that after construction. But yeah, that's a good point.
I appreciate that so much. And that's, you hit the nail on the head. But my concern about it is that they may not be getting the information as quickly. Like I worked for the highway department every day. I drove over here a while ago and most every car and truck that passed me, I was driving 65. They were driving 80 and very dangerous. And especially out of Texas, they're bad about wanting to drive fans through the area. But the point I'm making this is that if we don't keep our roads level and you're gonna have those wrecks. And if I counted 15 that need attention as I drove from the other side of Del High over to Monroe this afternoon, I counted them on purpose. I didn't get run over, but I got threatened. So the point I make is the highway department's got to tell the governor or communicate with the governor and the, and I'm sure the chairman always jumps in and tries to fix something in the state. But that is a real serious place that needs work on it. Like I just threw one road out to somebody. If, if, does anybody know all about the Madison Parish roads? Or Lake Providence up in that area, the East Carol? You know about those?
Yeah, we, and yes, sir, yeah.
You know how bad they are. The point I make, Mr. Chairman, is it's, it's time is very short. And if we don't address them quickly, we're not gonna look like we did our part and will not have done our part. And it's not all about money. It's about being there to fix what is broken and do it quickly.
Understood, yeah. Great points. We will certainly work to address that. Thank you.
Can I highlight one thing he said about safety? Sorry, I know I've spoken more than I probably should have.
Senator Stuart Cathy, District Attorney, on all eight parishes that I represent as well. So talking about safety, I want to highlight something to everybody in the room. We did pass legislation last year to drive in the left lane is a violation of the law regardless of what your speed is. If you're doing 100 miles an hour in the left lane, aside from speeding and you're blocking traffic, that is against the law now. So just want to highlight that as I drove down I-20 behind somebody doing 63 over the weekend.
Thank you for that public safety announcement. Mr. Secretary, I want to thank you and your staff, Mr. Canelo, the efforts from your design professionals down to your operations and maintenance crew. We hear a lot of good things from, from my colleagues about the work you and your team are doing in your region. And in editorial comment, look, I, I was born and raised in Cameron Parish. We have 5,000 people in the whole parish, okay? We've had large scale industrial development at the same time where we had Cat 4 direct hit hurricanes. No one knows how to handle good times and bad times when it comes to our infrastructure in this state. But I do appreciate the fact that this area is representing a large aspect of the growth for Louisiana. And so I think between your team here, that, that do have oversight over the infrastructure aspects of your region. They do have some input. It is a fluid situation. It's not going to be static. You're gonna continue to have different issues that arise and sometimes it may be a turn in lane. Sometimes it may be a traffic signal. Be patient, enjoy the prosperity. It, it will provide job opportunities to maybe some of your family members that maybe would have had to move to Arkansas or Mississippi or Texas otherwise. We have lived it ourselves. And so I appreciate you allowing me to make that, that comment. With that being said, I think we have all the public comments. Members, you okay?
May I say something, Mr. Chair?
Representative Moore?
Okay, first of all, I want to thank all of you all for coming here. I certainly want to.
Into, into the mic, please.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you all for coming to the meeting. I want to certainly thank the media. I think I saw someone from the media and also Mr. Frank DeTeige. Thank you. And you're gonna share some information, I'm sure, with your customers. But this is what I, every time I go to a meeting, I try to say this. Back in 2023, if I'm not mistaken, because I've heard it several times, Mr. Secretary, about litter and trash on our state roads and certainly throughout the community and local. But if I'm not mistaken, I think we spent about overall federal, well, not federal, local state dollars back in 2023. It said that we spent $91.34 million cleaning up our community. And when I'm out in the community, what I try to tell people is that, you know, help us in this area. Because if we can continue to clean up our community, which Washita Green and all the others are doing, maybe some of those dollars could be used for your department. So again, all of you all out there, please help us. I don't know if we can do more on the educational piece, but the litter, the trash, the drainage problems we having, it's certainly, it's causing our state to have to spend dollars that we could be using here. So again, thank you for coming and help us share that information along with it. It does matter with this department, with our transportation department. It stops up drainages and we have to spend those dollars. It's just a lot that goes on. So when you go back into your communities, you know, we have ordinances, we have state ordinances, we're laws, and we certainly have local ordinances. So please have meetings with your community and ask them to assist. And one motivation probably is because if we can cut back on those dollars, then those dollars could possibly be used to help this department. Thank you.
Thanks, Representative Moore. That sounded like a motion to adjourn.
It is. Okay.